Hello. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. This is our pre-town meeting for our special town meeting that's scheduled for next week. Just so that everyone is aware, there are documents at this front table. If you don't have them yet, one is the town meeting warrant. One is the agenda for tonight. So basically, you'll see the article number and who's going to speak about it if you have any questions. And the last document is just a correction that belongs in the last page of your town meeting warrant. And just to speak just briefly about that is when we printed off the town meeting warrant, the ones that were actually mailed to you, there was information inadvertently left off in the printing. Everything that was posted was posted on time, at the right places. We have no issues. We've gone through legal, so there's no issues with that. But we did want to make sure that you had the right copy. So I would like to start first with introductions for people up here so that you know who we are. We'll be the ones that are speaking on these. We'll start here. Adam?
Hi. My name is Dr. Adam Menard. I'm the town planner.
Dorie Vecchio, town manager.
Karen Harnoy, CFO, Town Accountant.
Stephen Coleman, Fire Chief.
Joanne Paquin, DPW Director.
Seth Willard, Chief Assessor.
And we'll also have a few people in the audience that if you have questions may come up and answer some questions that you may have. So I would like to start off with Karen Harnoy's with the fiscal year 2026 budget amendments, which is Article Number Two.
I am going to present just a short presentation on the town of Auburn's FY 2026 amended budget. It's going to be Article Two for the special town meeting as FY 2026 supplemental budget. There are several line items in here for some increases needed in the insurance and bonds account. The agricultural school for Norfolk Aggie, treasurer collector's salary, salary reserve, couple of line items in the police, the police chief's salary and police chief Quinn, fire department, fire professional development, fire physical fitness, and the firefighter's salary. There is a total supplemental appropriation request of $522,954. There is a partial funding source of $238,000 that is going to be coming from ambulance receipts, which covers the amount of the fire department line items. On the next slide, this is the total of the financial articles and also the details that are going to be presented for the October town meeting. We already discussed the Article Two. There's also Article... Oh, I'm sorry. For some reason, it's not advancing. Sorry about that. So on... One. No. So on this slide, we talked about Article Two, but there's some other financial articles that I'm going to include in the meeting. Article Five are the cancer and the heart screenings. That's going to come from ambulance reserve or proposed. Article Seven, active threat training for police and fire, that's proposed from ambulance reserve. Article Ten is the Goddard Centennial Celebration from Free Cash. Article Eleven is the OPEB Trust from Free Cash. Article Twelve, stabilization from Free Cash. Article Twenty is the golf course drainage and irrigation improvements, which is being partially proposed from borrowing and partially from the retained earnings from the golf course. Article Twenty-One, the design of the Water Street Culvert, and that's from other available funds. Article Twenty-Two, the Water Street Culvert replacement, and that is a proposed $1.5 million borrowing. And Article Twenty-Three, to replace a monitoring well, and that's proposed from Free Cash. So the total Free Cash use that's being proposed is $440,000. According to the town's Free Cash policy, the town can use up to 50% of the increase in the Free Cash from year to year, which is $632,000, which would leave us with a balance of $192,803. Of that amount, $142,000 is to be used for the FY '27 capital, which would leave us about $50,000 left in Free Cash. So for the appropriations, I put together a schedule that shows what was appropriated at the annual town meeting, what's suggested to be proposed at the fall town meeting, and what the increases or decreases were. Now, the fall town meeting articles are 1.679 that are being proposed. There's a change in the cherry sheet receipts of a reduction of $3,310. The overlay, there is a proposed reduction of $266,620. There's a reduction in cherry sheet offsets, $4,394. So there's a net increase being proposed to the total appropriations of $1.4 million. Now, on the revenue side, how are we going to make up the increase in the appropriations? Again, comparing the annual town meeting to the fall town meeting, there's an increase of $119,000 in local receipts. The town received an increase in the cherry sheet receipts of $157,000. The tax levy is being reduced by $266,620, which I'll talk a little bit about in the next slides. Available funds are increasing $454,000, and the increase in retained earnings in the enterprise funds, $500,000, and an increase in the use of Free Cash, $440,000 that we discussed in the previous slide. So there are equal amount of increased revenue, $1.4 million, to equal the amount of the increase in the appropriations, $1.4 million. I just want to look at any changes in the tax levy, comparing the, again, the annual town meeting to the fall town meeting. Tax levy base stays the same, 2.5% increase, stays the same at the $1.4 million. However, there was a change in the new growth. The new growth was estimated in $1 million in the original budget, and the actual amount came in at $733,380. So that's when I had mentioned that there was a decrease in the overlay for the same amount as the shortage in the new growth. Which brings us to the levy for fiscal '26, $49,758,632. Same levy limit as before, $59 million, and the percent of the levy limit is 84.23%. This slide just summarizes what we've talked about, but basically, it's showing that the appropriations and the revenue sources equal, which gives us a balanced budget, and the excess levy is still $9.3 million, as was proposed at the annual town meeting, and the utilization is still 2.5% of the proposition, 2.5%. And the last slide just shows our certification of Free Cash. In the general fund, just under $12.5 million. The sewer enterprise, just over $1 million. The golf course enterprise, $1.5 million, and the cable TV or the peg access at $321,000. So thank you for the attention to my presentation, and if there are any questions about that, we can address those. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Before we move forward, we're going to have some questions for Karen and for Article Two. I just want to let everyone know that we have our Board of Selectmen members here. We have Ann Kavanaugh, who is the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Todd Corain, who's the Vice Chair, Dan Carpenter, Steve Chambers, both Board of Selectmen members, and Doreen Goodrich, the new town moderator. So I just wanted to let you know they're in the... They're here as well. And sir, do you have a question? Can you come on up?
My name is Russell Towlesman. I'm with Precinct Four. And everything here is pretty good, but I must say, I really do support the police before I ask my question. It's just almost a $50,000 raise?
If...
That's what got me a little bit... Huh. What did he... I mean, can you explain why he...
Absolutely. So...
Thank you.
There is not a $50,000 raise. We did have a transition from one police chief to a new police chief, and the previous police chief had a contract, and we bought out his contract. So he had earned vacation time and earned time that we had to pay out by law, and that's what that difference is.
All right. So I can have clear understanding, the old police chief was under contract, and the new police is entering a new contract, and this is going to be what he deserves?
This is paying out the old contract, yes.
Oh, the way the line item reads, it looks like he's getting a raise. Police chief's salary from 147 to 152.
The prior police chief left in July, so it was the new fiscal year. So it was already in this budget. So when we paid him out in his last paycheck, by law, you have to pay him out all his vacation time, his personal time, whatnot. That's what this amount is. This is not a raise for the new chief.
All right. So this has nothing to do with the new...
No. Good question, though.
Thank you. I was confused.
Absolutely. No, good question. Sir?
I'm sorry I was late, so I didn't get the whole first part of the presentation. My question is, with all this increases in the budget, where's the money coming from? I mean, you're going to have to borrow this money?
There's a slide in the presentation that shows where the changes are being made. There are some increases in local receipts. The town received $157,000 more in cherry sheet receipts, and we're using some additional available funds, so there won't be any borrowing. It's all funds that...
So we're increasing what we did in May by what funds you could find available within the current revenue stream?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions about Article Number Two? Okay, perfect. So the next one is the Auburn Public School Amendments. That's Article Number Three and Four. We have Dr. Beth Chamberlain, who has a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. We do have two articles to discuss this evening. Article Three is going to change a little bit from what had recently been proposed through the Select Board and the Finance. If any of you have been past Swanson Road Intermediate School of late, know we're not putting in a swimming pool, even though it looks like a very big hole. We had found, we had had some sinkholes that had come to be that were getting very dangerous and very deep in the center of the parking lot. Upon some investigation, it was all a result of some drainage issues underneath from the system that had been put in place. At the time, they felt like it was fairly contained, and the original article we had put in for was to reuse $150,000 from Swanson Road HVAC to make the repair. Well, of course, once they peeled things back, things look quite different. So I do have a couple of pictures to show you. So when they peel this back, there's a big tank underneath there that helps with the rainwater drainage. And so, once they opened up the initial section that was supposed to be fixed, they found some additional holes. You can see on the side where the rocks are coming through. That's the good section, or the section that we didn't think needed to be repaired. There were additional holes that were drilled through the top of the pipe that should not have been. They should have been spaced out much, much more than they were, which are causing additional problems with this. You'll see here on the side that the rock should not be coming through the side of that pipe. And this one's a little bit harder to see, but along here, there are some hairline cracks that run up the side of the entire pipe. So what that's resulted in is basically doubling the scope of the project at Swanson Road to ensure that the water drains properly. So to do this, I'm thankful to the town for their guidance and support in trying to figure out how to finance this. So we will be changing the article for this. The initial quote for the first part of this project was $132,999. Now, with the need for the additional repair, that's an additional $155,400, so for a total of a little over $288,000. What we're proposing that we do is there is some funding left from the Auburn Middle School project in the amount of $265,553, and to make up the difference in this cost with some money that's been put aside in CIP for Swiss air quality. This does total more than the actual amount, but we may still need some funding for additional backfills, stone, things like that, that may be unforeseen. So we will be making some changes to that. So not anything we had anticipated, nor did we want to do this, but it does become a liability issue for the town. Ms. Paquin had taken a look at some of these pictures and said, "No, it needs to be fixed." And with winter coming, we need to get the job done, because otherwise, now we have a problem with parking and safety for the people that work at Swanson Road. So it is going to be a quite extensive proposition. And our other article is, has to do with, we had some drainage issues at the entryway of the Auburn High School. If you know, there's a main portico over the main entrance. There had been some leakage through there that could potentially have caused the ceiling under the portico to fall. They have repaired that, and there's a temporary repair for the drainage. We're looking for an additional $25,000 to make drainage permanent that won't freeze. So right now, it's not weather tight, so we need that additional money to make that repair at the high school.
Thank you, Dr. Chamberlain. Do we have any questions regarding Article Three and Four? Sure. Come on up.
Roger Armstrong, Precinct One. I'm still kind of new at this, so I'm saying things are a little dumb. Please bear with me. I'm looking at Article Three, and I'm not sure I'm reading this correctly. We're going back to fiscal year 2022, and we're trying to pull money into 2025. How does that happen?
So the monies that were approved in fiscal year '22 aren't borrowed until the projects go forward. So in this particular case, this project hasn't gone forward yet, so the money hasn't been borrowed, so we're able to repurpose it.
Where does that get borrowed from?
Well, we go out for bonds eventually. Sometimes, we do short-term borrowing, bond anticipation notes first, and then we go out to the market and actually borrow with bonds.
Just one other comment on here. I read this Swiss, and I scratched my head, and I said, "What the heck is a Swiss?" And I couldn't figure it out. I finally called the school department, and whoever I talked to said, "Um, um, um," and then he said, "Oh, Swanson Road." And I saw this in other places, if people could, when they write these things, if they could just spell that out, so dumb people like me can...
That is great feedback. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Sure. Want to come on up? Kathy Jo Beeminder for Precinct One. I just have a quick question about Article Four, and it may have been addressed already, and I just don't know the answer. But that roof repair, will that cover the leak over the stage in the high school auditorium as well?
That's been taken care of.
It has. I just didn't...
Totally separate thing, but that one's been taken care of.
Thank you. Yes. Does anyone else have any other questions for Article Three or Four? Okay. Think we can move on. Thank you so much, Dr. Chamberlain. Let's move on to Article Five.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. Good evening, everyone. Article Five is asking town meeting to appropriate $16,200 from ambulance receipts for the purpose of cancer and heart screenings for members of the fire rescue department. For longstanding town meeting members, this is an article that you have voted on in the past. Over the past six years, I've come to town meeting twice. So our current cancer and heart screening program, we have done every three years. So on every third year, I've come to town meeting, and the two previous asks were for $25,000. The reason that the amount is lower this time is because we're going to, my plan is to change up how the cancer and heart screenings are done moving forward. I'm going to basically divide the department up into thirds, and we will do a portion of the department annually, so on that third year, we cycle. This is, this is an extremely important program for the fire rescue department, and I want to thank the, you know, previous town meetings for supporting this. In the six years that we've been running this early detection cancer and heart screening, we have detected cancer, early detection of four members of the department, and two early detection cardiac issues that were, all of those cases were able to get early intervention, dealt with medically, and all the members are working. So it's an extremely important program. And like I said, in future years, I'm hoping that this just becomes part of the annual budget. It would still be funded through ambulance receipts, but it would just be embedded in the health and safety line of the operational budget. That way, we wouldn't have to come to town meeting on an annual basis and ask for the appropriation.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions on Article Number Five? If not, we'll move on to Article Number Six. Chief Coleman?
Thank you. So Article Six is asking town meeting to approve the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-Two, Section Four, Two, B, and B and a half. And this will allow members who have previously served as call firefighters in our department to buy back their credible service towards their retirement. The best and the easiest way to explain this is, let's say we have a high school student that graduates high school, and he works summers for us in the DPW weed-whacking within the Parks Department. And he does that for four years through college, every summer. And then, when he graduates from college, he goes into the municipal world and gets a job, you know, let's say he goes to the town of Holden, and he becomes a full-time DPW worker in the town of Holden. His credible service that he did for the town of Auburn over those summers of those four years, that's credible service that he would be able to buy back out of his own pocket to go towards his retirement. That currently does not exist. It exists in all facets of government, with the exception of call firefighters. This is the result of a multi-year lawsuit by firefighters, where they, basically, we felt that there was a misinterpretation of the law, and Worcester County Retirement has finally recognized there was a misinterpretation of the law. But the fix to it is for each municipality to adopt this provision of the law that would allow any member that has ever served the town of Auburn as a call firefighter, who then went to another community to work full-time, it would allow that employee from their pocket to be able to pay for credible service that they did here in the town of Auburn, to count towards their retirement in that other community. There is no financial obligation to the town of Auburn, because that employee never served as a full-time member of this department. So it's not, it's not pensionable service that the town would be responsible for when this employee retires down the road, and the town is not paying to buy back the credible service. The individual member is paying for that service. So there is no cost impact. This simply just allows call firefighters who have served the town of Auburn, who have moved on and become full-time firefighters in other municipalities, to just buy back on their own their credible service from Auburn.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions regarding Article Number Six? Not seeing any. Article Number Seven. Chief Coleman?
Thank you. Article Seven asks town meeting to appropriate $50,000 from ambulance receipts for personnel expenses and other related costs associated for the police and fire rescue department to conduct a joint active threat response training sometime this spring. Both departments have received active threat training. All the members individually have received active threat training. Both departments have several new members over the last couple of years, and the department wants to run a large-scale joint exercise with both departments where we work through a simulated active threat incident.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions regarding Article Number Seven? Seeing none. Article Number Eight. Dr. Adam Menard?
Good evening. This is a zoning amendment change. Those of you that have been town meeting members for a while know, been endeavoring to meet MBTA compliance with the state's regulations. This is hopefully going to be the do-it for those requirements. We met with the state over the summer, and they requested a few more changes. They want the apartments and multifamily called out separately in the definitions and descriptions, and they wanted to see the requirement for a special permit for an apartment in the flood plain and in the aquifer, kind of eliminate that special permit requirement. Now, the apartment, we necessarily need to comply with that section of the bylaw. They just wouldn't need to get a special permit. It would be covered as part of the site plan process. And hopefully, this will do it for the state requirements and get us to meet MBTA compliance.
Thank you, Dr. Menard. Do we have any questions for Article Number Eight? Seeing none. Article Number Nine. Dr. Menard?
Article Nine's another zoning change. This change is trying to clean up some data language, some old language, and to reduce some of the regulatory burden on some of the residents and businesses. You'll see the first section, earth removal, that struck out, that earth removal now resides in another part of the bylaws, so that's unnecessary. There's some changes to, you know, from solar system to solar panels, just changing some of the language. And it's eliminating the need for a special permit for some uses, such as a farmer's market or electric vehicle charging stations. Just felt it was a little burdensome to have a resident or business have to go through that regulatory process. That's kind of the idea of this change.
Thank you, Dr. Menard. Any questions regarding Article Number Nine?
I just can't understand what to say. So Article Nine is trying to update some language, some old language in the bylaw, and to reduce the regulatory burden for residents and businesses by eliminating the need for a special permit for certain accessory uses.
Any other questions regarding Article Nine? Okay. Seeing none. Article Ten. Article Ten is an appropriation of $50,000 from Free Cash for expenses related to costs associated with the Dr. Robert Goddard Centennial Celebration, currently scheduled for March of 2026. For the past several months, we've been working very closely as a team of volunteers in the community. Charles Slotkin from Worcester, who actually owns the Goddard House, and the Friends of the Robert Goddard Centennial, who is right now raising funds for the events. The events will happen on Saturday, March 14th. That'll be the dedication of Robert Goddard Park. There will be speakers and different types of events there. As you know, it's under construction. The rocket is down for safety re... As you know, it's under construction. The rocket is down for safety reasons, but we do have a statue coming that will be going up. And on Monday, which is the actual 100th anniversary, there will be a celebration at the golf course, where is actually where Robert Goddard had launched his rockets. In that event, there will be guest speakers from NASA. There'll be reenactments. There'll be real rocket launching. We'll have some for the kids, but we'll also have some bigger ones that we can just watch. It is really exciting that this is, it happened here, so we're trying to make the most of this event. We are hearing that there'll be thousands of people coming. We don't know. Like, this is the first time we've dealt with this ourselves here. We did have, I think, a 50th or, or another anniversary, and it was, it was pretty busy then, too. These funds are appropriated, in case we need them, for public safety, for police and fire, for parking, for people, police officers in the street navigating traffic. It's to make sure that during this event, that public safety is a top priority. So that's what these funds are for. If they're not used, they'll revert back to free cash. But if they are used, that's what they're going to be used for. The fundraising itself, the group of volunteers that are actually doing the fundraising for us, you'll probably see them throughout town more and more, they're going to raise the funds for all of these events. The NASA speakers, the rocket launches, the reenactments, the speakers that we may have at the library or the school department. So we are anticipating a multi-day program. Right now, we have two full set days, but that is what these funds are for. Does anyone have any questions? Sure, come on up.
Again, I'm Russell Tallisman, Precinct Four. And from what I learned from years of being a town meeting member, free cash can go to a lot of different issues and programs to help the town. I'm having a hard time with $50,000 going to host a party. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Tallisman. I just want to kind of reiterate what the town manager said. We actually had a Goddard Centennial Committee Meeting last night. And we have many residents in this community who are very engaged in, it's, it's kind of weird, like Rocket World. I don't know if that's the right word. But they are, they are engaged in the, in the space environment, and they pay attention to rocketry and, and all of those things. We have some very engaged citizens that are on this committee that know a lot more about this world than we do. And what we are being told by Charles Slatkin, who runs the Wonder Mission, which is the organization that owns the Goddard House in Worcester, what we're being told by the folks, our citizens who, who are here is, this centennial is a big deal in this, in this world and in this space. And this is not only a nationwide event, this is a worldwide event. Modern rocketry started here. And what we are being told, and, and the reality is, is that we don't have a way to quantify this, because we don't know. But what we are being told is, at the centennial of Kitty Hawk, there were 110,000 people that came to Kitty Hawk. If we even had a quarter of what Kitty Hawk gets, we could potentially have 25,000 people standing on the golf course. Okay? So I don't, I don't know that that will be the case. Maybe 100 people show up. I don't know. But the money that we're asking for here, this is not for the actual events. These are public safety expenses. From the public safety perspective, police, fire, DPW, we are using the Fourth of July, the annual fireworks, as our, as our base, as our platform. We have a very good plan, public safety plan, transportation plan, on how we move people in and out of the Pappas complex. But that's, that's resources. It's police, it's fire, it's DPW workers, it's the Health Department. It's all of those things that make that, that spin. This $50,000 expense is to cover salaries of those employees over that weekend in the event that we get the kind of crowd that we're anticipating. Our public safety plan is going to be flexible, so we can ramp up or ramp down. But for, for us to sit here right now and tell you what this event is going to look like, or how many people may be standing at the golf course, we can't, but we have to be prepared. And the reality is, is that this money, the additional overtime and the salary money to, to run these events and to make sure that these events are managed properly, they do not sit within the existing operation budgets of any of these departments. So this $50,000 is to make sure that we do have the expenses in the event that it ramps up or ramps down. So it's not for, you know, the fundraising group and the Friends of Group. They're outstanding. They're raising money to throw the party. Okay? This is for salaries for town employees to make sure that we have a successful event and to make sure that the entire weekend, provided that we're inundated with people from around the country or around the world who are coming to celebrate the centennial, that we, we can appropriately manage this event. You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else have any questions? Sure, come on up.
Hi, Matthew Denham, Precinct Two. It sounds like there's still some planning going on around this, but I was just curious, because it sounds like a lot of it is talked about the safety and the personnel. You mentioned July 4th, but is transportation included in that? I know I've been up to the golf course a couple of times myself. I know it's very congested. It seems very narrow. I know when Fox 25 came up there, there was a lot of people. It seemed like a lot of people. So I wasn't sure if transportation is included in that with personnel and things like that.
So it's not included in this $50,000, but we have been discussing transportation. We're working with the WRTA. We're going to be working, hopefully closely, with the school department. So we need to create the transportation plan. You know, like I said, we're, we're using the Fourth of July festivities sort of as the framework for it, but it's certainly going to have to be, you know, typically, a busy year on the golf course is anywhere from 10,000 to 12,000 people at the fireworks event. So if we're potentially talking about, you know, doubling that, or maybe a little more than double, things are certainly going to have to be ramped up. It came up yesterday about working with Holy Cross. So we're actually working a transportation plan from both sides of Packard Chog Street. So there's still a lot of details to work out. Again, the hard part about an event like this is we don't know whether, you know, 30 are going to show up or 30,000 are going to show up. But in order for us to, to, to make sure that we have a good plan, we kind of have to listen to the chatter of the people who are involved in this world. And, and the people who are involved in this world are saying, you need to be prepared for people showing up at the golf course, you know.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, come on up.
Precinct Two. Has the committee that's forming this determined some kind of a goal or an idea of whether you're going to raise 250,000, if you're going to raise $400,000? I think part of what we're looking at is this $50,000, which we've heard, you're expecting that you possibly won't even use because you'll have raised enough funds. So I don't want to lose sight of that, and that it could be returned back to free cash. So given the logistics of the size of what you're thinking the event will be, do you have a goal in mind of what you're thinking as a board you should be able to raise for an event like this?
So I can tell you that the, the Friends of Group, your, your goal is much loftier than their goal. They're trying to raise $50,000. I think they feel that if they were able to raise $50,000, that that would be a win. So they're seeking, they're working closely with the Chamber of Commerce, you know, trying to seek corporate donations and, and other things. So whatever the Friends of Group raises, it will go towards paying, you know, the, the expenses of a guest running the weekend, you know, the hot cocoa and the cookies and all of those things. And then any additional money, once all of those expenses are paid, they, they could certainly be transferred the town, to town, to cover any offset, you know, that we have, to reduce this kind of amount. But I think the town is just trying to be cautious that, and again, right, this is, it's, in our opinion, it's not in good faith to say that the Friends of Group is going to go out and try to seek donations so we can cover the overtime expenses to, you know, to run this weekend. It should go towards the, the festivities. But to your point, once all of those expenses are paid, and that money's transferred to the town, that we, the town could use that money as, for an offset of anything. So any of this unused portion would go back.
Well, I think in, in keeping with what's been said, the town manager, Mr. Vecchio, did say that we may not even have to use the $50,000, that it could fully, I don't know that the Friends of, you know, this event would, you know, if I had 25,000 over budget, I'd find something else to spend it on and use it to make it even a more grander event. I'm just trying to clarify, as a town meeting member, that I'm hearing that we don't touch the $50,000 unless we need it. And if we don't need it, it goes back to where it came from.
I think that's a fair assessment. I, I think how we derived at the $50,000 was police, fire, and DPW. We looked at what we do for the Fourth of July. We said if we had double the amount of people, if we have 30,000 people that showed up, this is what we're going to need for resources. This is what we're going to need for staffing within the timeframes, you know, over a two-day event. So that's how the $50,000 was derived. If 3,000 people show up, we're going to be able to scale back the, the planning, and that full 50 wouldn't be utilized. If 30,000 show up, that 50,000 is based on 30,000 people coming to the golf course.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions regarding Article 10? Seeing none. Article 11, the Chief Financial Officer, Karen Harnoys?
Article 11 is to appropriate 250,000 from free cash to the Town OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust. Now, this is an annual article that's put on for the fall to put some money from free cash towards the liability. Currently, the liability is 63, around $63.3 million. And Other Post-Employment Benefits is the health insurance for retirees, which the town contributes 50% to. And they, we have a, a study that's done every couple of years, and then we update it every year to, to, to look at whether our liability increases or decreases depending upon our investments. So this fiscal year, we're asking for 250,000. Last year, and several years before that, the town has been contributing 500,000. But unfortunately, the free cash hasn't had as large of an increase this year. So we're proposing the 250,000.
Thank you, Karen. Does anyone have any questions regarding Article 11? Seeing none. Article 12, Karen?
So Article 12 is to appropriate 100,000 from free cash to the Town Stabilization Fund. This, again, is an annual article. Last year, there was 250,000 that was contributed to the stabilization fund. This year, we're recommending 100,000. And just to give you an idea, currently, the, the balance in the stabilization is 4.7 million, which might seem like that's, you know, and it is a pretty healthy balance, but we're coming into some hard times. Fiscal '26 was a hard budget, and we see that going forward, it's going to be tough budgets to balance as well. So we want to make sure that we contribute and leave a healthy balance in the stabilization fund.
Thank you, Karen. Does anyone have any questions regarding Article 12? Sure, come on up.
I'm Peggy Langley from Precinct Five. And I'm a new member, so I would like to know what the Town Stabilization Fund is and what, what it's for.
Sure. The Town Stabilization is sometimes also called like the rainy day fund. So we put free cash aside and maybe other amounts that we have in order to help us in case we have a tough year, in case there's some emergency or something that happens that we have, we end up having a big gap in the budget, or even, or even smaller amounts. And we try to keep that in the stabilization fund. We try not to use that. But if we need to, then we know that it's there, and then we have that reserve available.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions regarding Article 12? Seeing none. Article 13, 14, and 15 are senior tax abatements, and they'll be discussed by the Select Board Vice Chair, Todd Corain.
How you doing, everyone? Just a correction. They are actually not the senior tax abatements. They're the veteran tax abatements. And this is essentially a redo of Article 32 from the May Town Meeting. At that time, we had placed all three exemptions in one Warren article. Just to take you back a little bit, in August of 2024, the state passed what was called the Heroes Act. It provided various incentives to small businesses, as well as municipalities, to support our veterans. And with respect to municipalities, it allowed municipalities to offer various tax, property tax abatements to veterans. We already had a, a program, and it just provided additional benefits that the municipality, if adopted, could provide. And in the Article 32 of the May Town Meeting, we had put all three of these together in one. It passed. That went to the state. And the state sent it back and asked us to break it into three separate votes for clarity purposes. So essentially, Article 13, 14, and 15 are a redo. And it, it, essentially, the town is accepting parts of Mass. General Law, specifically Chapter 59, Section 22G, which provides a veteran's tax abatement for those properties, residential properties that are owned by trusts for the, for the specific benefit of a veteran. Right now, if a trust owns the property and it's, the property's held in trust for a veteran, they are not qualified for the, for the, the tax abatement. So this would allow them to get that tax abatement. 22I increases that amount by, what's, is a COLA, so it's a cost of living increase. So it automatically increases the amount that that veteran can get for the tax abatement based on the cost of living increase calculated by the federal government. So basically, allows that amount to keep up with the rate of inflation. And then 22J doubles the benefit that they can get. So if they're getting, let's say, $500, they would get $1,000 as their tax abatement. So essentially, we're redoing Article 32 at the request of the state.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding Article 13, 14, or 15? Seeing none. Article 16, the Traffic Study Bylaw. Dr. Adam Menard?
This is another zoning change. This Traffic Study Bylaw is designed to provide a framework for developers and for the Planning Board and ZBA for a large-scale development, traffic-intensive development. The traffic study is usually required of a large project, like a distribution facility or a large housing project. This bylaw provides a framework for those developers and their traffic engineer to provide the Planning Board and ZBA with the information they need to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding Article 16? Sure, come on up.
I'm Robles from Precinct One. As I read this thing over, I mean, this is pretty intense. I'm wondering to myself, okay, we, we don't have a lot of control over Route 12, Route 20. You know, these are the major roads, and I'm saying, well, where would this be effective? Where would, you know?
This coming into any of large-scale projects, like I said, whether it's a distribution facility, it's going to have a lot of trucks going in and out, whether it's on 12 or 20 or elsewhere in town, like a major housing project, they like the 150 apartment units. It's going to generate a lot of traffic to possibly a side street that didn't always have that amount of traffic. So try to find out what the impact is and try to prevent, mitigate some of the effects of that development, whether it may, may need some roadway improvements. And the boards could ask the developer to try to either work a mastar, say, or to try to provide funding for those improvements. It's helped.
I mean, to, to me, it just seems like this, there's a lot of regular, you know, a lot of rigmarole, a lot of stuff in here. To ask somebody to do it, I mean, if, if we want somebody, if we want business in town, are we chasing them out to Cherry Valley somewhere, or?
So if I can speak to that, this first came about when we started meeting with the developers that were coming into town under the 40B process. And we found that it was important to try to look at the whole-
it was important to try to look at the whole area versus just the street that the 40B was being proposed. So this was initially drafted because of that. And it also has, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but it also has, um, if it's a waiver or a final authorization, that we can, um, make changes to this based on what, whatever the development's going to be. So it's basically just putting in some parameters where there aren't any right now.
Do we have any influence over something that's going to be on Route 20? Um, do we take this and go to the state and say, hey, you know, we want you to consider this? Or do they just say, you know, we, we don't care, we've got our own studies?
There's, there's different rules depending on what road it is. With the state road, you need a, uh, usually you need a mass stop permit to, like have a curb cut. That's separate from the Planning Board or ZBA. They may look at a traffic study that the town asks for, but that they're not always, different approval processes. Um, with these traffic, there's the, traffic studies are not done with every project. They're, they're relatively infrequent, maybe. Once a year, we get one to the, to inspection services. Um, and you're right, there is a lot in this, but the boards also, um, hire peer reviewers. So when a developer submits a traffic study, we send that traffic study to another traffic engineer to have them look at to make sure it's done right. And that's done at the applicant's expense, it's not on the town's expense. So we pay for the applicant to do it.
I'm not sure I understood your answer as far as what influence we have with this, with the state on Route 20.
We don't really have any influence on the state. The state is their own entity.
Okay. So if a business wanted to, and I'm thinking of like that Warehouse Park, wherever it is, Route 20 by Mass Pike, I mean, I'm not sure, maybe, maybe we should have had one of these for there. Um, I mean, you just have, you just have trucks just coming out of nowhere and it doesn't, like, that was very well thought out. Um, but I'm, I'm not sure that, I guess you know, what, what influence we have on that because if I understand it correctly, the state can do whatever they want with Route 20 or Route 12.
I mean, that you have their, their guidelines. There are traffic studies to find out how much new traffic is being generated by this project and what those effects are, if any, on the existing traffic. So it's just to try to learn what's going on. And I can lean on our chairman, our vice chair, the selectman, if he wants to comment, because he, he's knowledgeable about the traffic stuff too. Um, throw, throw him under the bus there.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so these types of traffic studies, just to take you back, um, the, this issue came up in Auburn, um, as the town manager said, uh, when Perry Place was going before the zoning board of appeals. And at that time, the ZBA had asked for a traffic study. Um, and knowing from my previous time on the planning board, uh, we've, uh, would ask for traffic studies depending on the, the size of the, of the project. And what came back was, um, in the feeling of at least by the chair of the zoning board of appeals, inadequate information, um, by the, uh, consultant who worked for Perry Place. And the answer when they asked questions was that, well, your bylaw does not require information, uh, so we are giving you what we feel you need. Um, so what he had done is he went and did research on what other municipalities do and, and putting on my day job hat. It is common for municipalities, large cities, small cities, as well as suburbs, immediately outside cities, to have ordinances or bylaws, uh, or even policies requesting traffic, uh, studies and what should be in them based on the size of what's being developed. Um, so he actually leaned on, I believe these came from the city of Waltham. Um, and he put them forward, basically a carbon copy. Uh, he removed Waltham, inserted Auburn. This went before the May Town Meeting and, uh, myself and other members of the Select Board and, and, and other boards, when we reviewed this, uh, raised some concerns, uh, with the language. Uh, it still said city instead of town. It made references to Greater Boston instead of, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the Blackstone River Basin. Um, and it required some information that really wasn't applicable to Auburn. Um, so at that time, Town Meeting did not pass it. Uh, and the Select Board indicated that we wanted to bring, that it was a good idea. We agreed with the zoning board of appeals chair that this was needed. Um, and we would bring it back after we make those changes. So in there, we've made, uh, the, the, we've identified the changes that we've made. So we've put this forward. Um, as, uh, Dr. Menard said, this would not be for every single project. Um, it would be, uh, basically, it would allow our staff or our planning regulatory boards, either the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals, to ask for the information and what information they want to require the developer, if it's a large enough project that warrants it. If it's a small, single family, they're not going to ask for anything. If it's a two-family, three-family, probably not going to ask for anything. If it's Starbucks going at a, a possible location, they might ask for it. If it's a large 150-unit, um, you know, housing, uh, complex going on a, a small dead-end private way, they're going to ask for it. And this allows them to get the information that they need to make a sound judgment on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else? Sure, come on up.
Ellen Ethea, Precinct Five. Will this bylaw, um, have any effect on any of the 40B, um, projects that have already come before the town in the last year or two?
Uh, no, those, those 40Bs would already have had traffic studies as part of their permitting and, and this would take an effect if this passes that town and it take into effect after that. So those are already been permitted.
Right. So these are for all future developments?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just to, to elaborate on that question, um, for the people in the Wallace Ave neighborhood in Athan Street, those are future projects and this will take effect for those projects. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to Article 17 with, um, Director, DPW Director Joanna Paquin.
So, uh, this article is to, um, accept Nancy Drive as a town road. Um, I will be looking to withdraw this article and to put it, um, to put it on the, um, on the town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting. We were hoping to get all of our approvals done prior to the town meeting, um, but we just weren't able to, um, fit all the meetings in before the, um, before this town meeting.
So Article 17 will be postponed until the annual town meeting. Article 18, Joanna Paquin.
So, uh, this is, um, for the town to accept an easement or, uh, to provide an easement for National Grid. There's currently a, um, a, uh, utility pole on the corner of the driveway, um, to the fire station headquarters on Auburn Street. Uh, the existing utility pole does not have an easement on it. Um, and National Grid needs to replace the pole and they will not replace it unless we have the, uh, easement in place. So this will essentially give an easement to, um, to have a pole in the same location as it already exists.
Do we have any questions on Article 18? Seeing none. Article 19, Joanna Paquin.
Uh, so this project is a sewer, um, it's a sewer project. It's, um, there's two portions of this project. So it's a sewer pipe, uh, rehabilitation project. Uh, one of the locations is at the end of Goddard Drive and it's through a cross-country easement. Uh, it's, um, basically a pipelining and some replacement of the existing sewer force main. Uh, and the other portion of the project is the replacement of, um, the sewer force main from, uh, the Sword Street Pump Station along Route 12, um, towards where it, um, turns near Jerome Ave.
Thank you. Joanna, does anyone have any questions? Sure, sir.
Ken Frost. Is this the project that's going on now on Southbridge Street from Sword Street down to Jerome Ave?
No. So there is a project that was ongoing that, um, by the Water District. Um, they were-
No, no, this is down towards Sword Street. They're, they're putting pipes in all along Southbridge Street.
Right. So, um, the Water District was installing their water main from Worcester towards, um, Sword Street along Route 12.
So it's not what's doing now?
No.
Thank you. Sir? Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Article 20, Joanna?
Uh, so this article, um, is for, um, the packed-up golf course improvements. It's also a, a two-part, uh, article. Um, it has, um, it includes drainage and irrigation improvements, um, that would total, um, $2,500,000. $500,000 would come out of, straight out of retained earnings and the remainder of the money will be, um, would be borrowed, uh, to be paid through the golf course. Um, I think that's-
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding Article 20? Please.
So this, this work is going to be all on the golf course?
Yes.
Now, since the golf course is supposed to be self-sustaining, are they the ones that are going to be paying for the 2,000, 2,000, 2 million? Or is the town?
No, this will be paid through the golf course.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Article 21, Joanna?
Uh, this article is for, um, I think some of, um, some of you might, might have noticed that we, um, needed to close down the rain, one lane of traffic along Water Street. Uh, we were, uh, contacted by Mass DOT saying that the culvert, um, underneath that portion of the road, uh, is in disrepair and, um, we needed to close down the lane for safety reasons. So, uh, we worked with town administration, uh, to look at funding to, um, remediate that culvert. Um, I would look, I would like to, um, amend that article to, um, change the wording from replacement to remediation. Uh, we are still working on, um, some potential alternatives, um, for that area, um, meeting with public safety, um, on, uh, some other possibilities. Um, but it would be to address those issues.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding Article 21? Sure.
That's Russell Towesman, Precinct Four. Just a couple of questions. Uh, number one is on the Auburn Street design. Was that just what you just said, pretending to Water Street? Or is that just painting lines in the road? What is the Auburn, because I live there, what is the Auburn Street design?
So the Auburn Street design is the money remaining from, um, the money appropriated for the, the original tip project when, when the state redesigned, um, Auburn Street. Um, and, um, the town had appropriated funds for, uh, right-of-way takings or, um, streetscaping and other, um, other parts of the project that Mass DOT would not cover. So there's some money available.
Okay. And can you explain the feasibility study for the middle school? I mean, are you thinking, is it feasible to have the middle school, um, in the dock?
If I could answer, um, just this question as a whole, when I became town manager, one of the things the Board of Selectmen had asked me to do and the Chief, um, Financial, um, Director, is to look at commitments that we had and money put aside, not, is it borrowed? Are these borrowed?
Yes.
They're already borrowed. Money's put aside for specific projects that were just sitting there. So all of these projects are done. They're all complete. So we're trying to, with this transfer, we're trying to, number one, clean up the books, um, close out these projects and use these funds for something that is a like purpose. Because it has to be borrowed for the same period of time to be approved through the, our financial advisors. And all of these, um, accounts have gone through our financial advisor to ensure that we can use them for the Water Street culvert. So they're all done. The money's been sitting there in some cases several years. So we're right now trying to clean up the accounts versus anything necessary to do with, with these particular projects.
And the land acquisition?
Same thing. It was, it's leftover money from the high school land acquisition.
My last question is, what do you mean by high school construction? Is that remodeling or fixing or?
So that is for the prior, uh, the high school is over 20 years old, I believe, now. So that's how old this money is. So we are repurposing those funds instead of asking the town to reappropriate additional funds. And for these, this capital project, we're actually re-appropriating funds that we have already in the accounts. So that's, that project's 20 years old and the money's been in those accounts. So we're moving them out.
Now I understand, maybe the language should be re-appropriating and-
Yes.
Thank you.
It is confusing. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions about Article 21? Seeing none. Article 22, Joanna?
Uh, so this is tied with the Water Street, um, article, and I would be looking to withdraw this article, um, based on the recommendations from the engineering, um, and from the town on what, what the ultimate, um, solution is going to be for those Water Street culvert, for the, the culvert. So we're not going to be ready for construction in May. So we might be coming back to a town meeting for, um, for the replacement of those culverts. Um, but if there is an alternative for that, uh, we would be addressing it at the annual town meeting.
So Article 22 has been postponed. Article 23, Joanna?
Uh, so this is for the, um, the landfill off of Rochdale Street. Uh, we have a capped landfill, um, in that part of town. Um, and we have been, um, we have been in discussions with Mass DAP, um, and they indicated that we will be, well, we, we will need a third-party inspection. So this will, um, address, or this will fund the third-party inspection by our consultant as well as a replacement of, um, some monitoring wells that have been damaged.
Thank you. Is there any questions regarding Article 23? Seeing none. Article 24, Joanna?
Uh, this is, um, repurposing CIP funds from this year. We had, um, a, a truck that is, um, that we need for the winter and, um, it's a major repair. And, um, so we're looking to reap, repurpose our, um, the, uh, the money that we were going to be using for the, um, Catch Basin truck. Um, we have realized that we are able to fix the existing Catch Basin truck. Um, and we can use this money for, um, the, the repair of, um, this truck that we will need for the winter.
Have any questions regarding Article 24? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Thank you, Joanna. Article 25 is a citizen's petition for Muhammad Mustafa. Is he, I'm not sure if there's any questions. They are here. If you have any questions regarding this article, they're here to answer any questions you may have. Does anyone have any questions regarding Article 25? Okay, seeing none. Article 26, um, as of this morning, I met with, um, the residents of Whitman Bailey. They're going to postpone this article until May of 2026. So Article 26 will be postponed as well. Does anyone have any other questions? Sure. Come on up, sir. Sure, come on up, sir.
Yes, again, Russell Towesman, Precinct 4. I just have, they're not really questions, I just have people asking me what's what. And the first question is, where do we stand and when can we expect to see something happen with the fire, the new fire station? And the second question is, I'm hearing a lot of rumors about what's going to happen with Bentley's. Is there anything you guys can enlighten me on?
Sure. Chief, do you want to talk about the fire station?
Sure, thank you. So the Fire Station Building Committee continues to meet every other week. They're currently working with our owner's project manager and Tecton, our architectural firm, in the design process. What's the date today? This Friday, we're expecting to receive some bids back from subcontractors. So they're basically, they're in the process of putting the entire design package together to go out to bid shortly after the first of the year. The building committee will actually be before the board of selectmen at their next meeting, I believe Monday, next Monday, to provide an update. So if anybody is interested in, in reviewing the timeline, if they go to the town's website, they can click on the Fire Station Building Committee page and there is an outline there with a projected timeline. So essentially, they're hoping to go out to bid around the first of the year, award a general contractor, and the hope is to still break ground sometime in May or June with an anticipated move-in date of December 2027. But the committee will be before the board next week, providing a full update on what's been going on.
Yes, so right now, it's tied up in a lawsuit. That's all I can say, there's a lawsuit. Yeah, we don't, we don't know what the outcome of that will be. Does anyone else have any questions? Sure.
Eric Chilton, Precinct 4. Regarding Article 19, sorry, I'm a little bit late on the force main rehabilitation. Is, just like the DPW publishes repaving schedules in anticipation of subsequent years when different areas might be repaved, all of these systems require, you know, ongoing maintenance. Do we have a similar schedule for sewer rehabilitation projects that might be anticipated into the future after this one?
So we do have a plan that, actually, we, we worked with a consultant to look at different sections of town. So it was our, it was an, an overall town-wide infrastructure plan for sewer. And certain sections of town were rated based on how, how critical those, that infrastructure would be. So we are going through each section based on their rating. And so, so there is a plan and so right now, we have the first section that was, that was evaluated, we're, we're doing some, some pipelining in certain, we just finished this week in, in some sections of town. At the same time, we're testing and cammering and doing some smoke testing in other sections. So it's an ongoing kind of evolving process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any? Sure, come on up. How often do you get us just sitting up here, waiting for your questions? Take advantage of it.
Happy Joe Beeminder for Precinct 1. This is really back to Article 2, I was just looking at it as I was listening. And it's really the fire physical fitness from $0 to $48,000. Planet Fitness is $19.99 a month. Just.
Sure, hold on one second, chief.
Sure. So the firefighters just negotiated a new collective bargaining agreement. And this is a new article to their contract where, when a member of the department, so we, the police department has something similar. So we will host a day where the firefighter has to, have to demonstrate their physical ability through a series of testing. Providing that they pass the exam, they would receive a $1,000 stipend on an annual basis for passing the physical fitness exam. So it's going from $0 to $48,000 because it's a, it's a line item that never existed in the budget before. So it, it's based on 48 members of the department receiving a $1,000 annual stipend.
And I'm sorry, just one more. And I, I'm sorry, I just don't know enough about it, but the line above it with the fire professional development, I'm guessing this is training and classes, but it's more than doubling?
It is. So again, as part of that new collective bargaining agreement, they have some additional education in terms of their paramedic recertification. So that, that is part of their new paramedic recertification. And again, you, you have to, you got to remember that, yet again, like 48 members of the department, when you divide that up, it's, it looks like a large number, but it's several thousand dollars per member on an annual basis.
Thank you. Sure, come on up.
Hi, Lisa Rochford, Precinct 3. Article 19, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards here. I just had a quick question about all the DPW work that would be, be done in this article. It wouldn't be in March of 2026, right? Because that's all the streets here, the golf course.
Article 19, the sewer.
So this, we're looking to bid it out in the spring when it starts, I'm not really sure, but even though it's near that area, the work that we're going to be doing, a lot of that work is actually going to be cross-country, off the streets. So it, and I can't imagine that we would be ready for, you know, March 16th or?
Thanks.
Sure, come on up.
Lynn Rice-Holmes in Precinct 4. I'm just wondering, I kind of missed it. What's Norfolk Agricultural Assessment?
That is the agricultural school that if a student wants to go for those, for those classes and if we cannot offer them here in the school district, then we have to send them out of district. So in this assessment is the tuition, I believe it's for four students and for transportation for them to the school. This is for school year 26.
Thank you. Sure, come on up.
Kevin Traynor, Precinct 5. What do they do for the cancer and cardiovascular screening for the firemen?
Sure, so I'm, I'm trying to recall. So it's, it's an ultrasound, PSA testing, stress testing, CAT scan. So this, this work would be done in conjunction with UMass Hospital. So they would actually be going to the hospital and then having a series of stress tests and all those things.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, thank you so much for coming out tonight. I know it's getting dark early, but I appreciate you all being here. If you have any questions between now and Monday, please feel free to call my office and we'll get back to you as soon as possible, either myself or, or someone up here to answer your questions. So thank you so much again.
Thank you, good night.